Ladies and gentlemen, if I could just have everybody take a seat now, it's just about to begin. If I could, um, if I could just have everybody take a seat now, it's just about to begin. If everyone would just please take a seat, we'll bring the body in. Thank you. If everyone would just please take a seat, we'll bring the body in. Thank you. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise and welcome the 2024-2025 Lowell City Council Elect, Ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise and welcome the 2024-2025 Lowell City Council Elect, led by Assistant City Clerk Angela Getchea. led by Assistant City Clerk Angela Getchea. Good morning, families, friends, and invited guests, Good morning, families, friends, and invited guests, and welcome to the 2024-2025 City Council Elect Inaugural Exercises. and welcome to the 2024-2025 City Council Elect Inaugural Exercises. My name is Mike O'Garry, and I have the honor and the privilege and the joy My name is Mike O'Garry, and I have the honor and the privilege and the joy of being the City Clerk of being the City Clerk for the City of Lowell, Massachusetts, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. for the City of Lowell, Massachusetts, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I would like to extend a special welcome to the family and friends of the members of the body I would like to extend a special welcome to the family and friends of the members of the body in noting the newly-elected member, City Councilor John Dakota. in noting the newly-elected member, City Councilor John Dakota. I'd like also to recognize people that helped put this event together. I'd like also to recognize people that helped to put this event together. They are indispensable, they are hard-working people. They are indispensable, they are hard-working people. First of all, I'd like to recognize my Assistant Clerk Angela Getchea, First of all, I'd like to recognize my Assistant Clerk Angela Getchea, who has run my office for a long time. Thank God she's there, she does a great job here. who has run my office for a long time. Thank God she's there, she does a great job here. And very welcome, very welcome. And very welcome, very welcome. Also, I'd like to send a recognition and a thank you to the Lowell Memorial Art Astoria staff. Also, I'd like to send a recognition and a thank you to the Lowell Memorial Art Astoria staff. They've been more than helpful, they're very accommodating. They've been more than helpful, they're very accommodating. We moved here a couple of years ago due to the change in how the city is represented, We moved here a couple of years ago due to the change in how the city is represented, being Lowell members, and we just wanted to make sure the space is available. being Lowell members, and we just wanted to make sure the space is available. They're accommodating, it's a great venue, and we're so happy to be here. They're accommodating, it's a great venue, and we're so happy to be here. I'd also like to recognize Thomas Golden's manager's staff that he has. I'd also like to recognize Thomas Golden's manager's staff that he has. They've been helpful throughout the whole process, they're always helpful throughout the course of the year, They've been helpful throughout the whole process, they're always helpful throughout the course of the year, and it was no surprise they were helpful in organizing this event. and it was no surprise they were helpful in organizing this event. I'd just have to do a special recognition to Dawnreen Burges, I'd just have to do a special recognition to Dawnreen Burges, who is unbelievable in her capacity in the manager's office. who is unbelievable in her capacity in the manager's office. If there's a task that needs to be done, Dawnreen leaves no stone unturned. If there's a task that needs to be done, Dawnreen leaves no stone unturned. She's fantastic, she's great helping, she's really worthy of note. She's fantastic, she's great helping, she's really worthy of note. And she's probably hiding, you won't be able to find her, but thank her anyway. And she's probably hiding, you won't be able to find her, but thank her anyway. I'd also like to recognize the Lowell High School Choir over there. I'd also like to recognize the Lowell High School Choir over there. They're going to be singing our national anthem. They're going to be singing our national anthem. The membership gets larger and larger every year because it's so good, The membership gets larger and larger every year because it's so good, and I think people are attracted to a good product, and we have a lot over there. and I think people are attracted to a good product, and we have a lot over there. They're going to be fantastic, and I look forward to hearing from them. They're going to be fantastic, and I look forward to hearing from them. Also, I'd like to notice the Lowell High School ROTC Color Guard in front of you with the swords. Also, I'd like to notice the Lowell High School ROTC Color Guard in front of you with the swords. Again, they're a nationally-recognized organization that has gone it year in and year out. Again, they're a nationally-recognized organization that has gone it year in and year out. They represent the city of Lowell with great prestige, and we're happy to have them here once again. They represent the city of Lowell with great prestige, and we're happy to have them here once again. Also on the stage, I'd just like to note, other than the councilors, Also, on the stage, I'd just like to note, other than the councilors, is Father Nicholas Sinella of the Immaculate Conception Church, is Father Nicholas Sinella of the Immaculate Conception Church, who will be doing the invocation. who will be doing the invocation. He's done that church great service over the last few years, over the last decades, really. He's done that church great service over the last few years, over the last decades, really. It's been a while since I met him, a long time ago. It's been a while since I met him, a long time ago. Does outstanding work, and it really is an approachable guy, and great to have in the community. Does outstanding work, and it really is an approachable guy, and great to have in the community. And I'd also like to note, after a nationwide search, And I'd also like to note, after a nationwide search, we had Judge Stephen Geary able to take the oath from the Lowell District Court, we had Judge Stephen Geary able to take the oath from the Lowell District Court, Justice in the Lowell District Court. a justice in the Lowell District Court. It's fantastic to have a native son in that building, It's fantastic to have a native son in that building, and it's really a good plug for me as well, being a cousin. and it's really a good plug for me as well, being a cousin. So, welcome here, Judge Geary. So, welcome here, Judge Geary. And lastly, from doing an invocation as well, is from the Glory Buddhist Temple, And lastly, from doing an invocation as well, is from the Glory Buddhist Temple, we have the venerable Sakunda Neel. we have the venerable Sakunda Neel. Would you all please rise now, and I'll have Father Sinella deliver the invocation. Would you all please rise now, and I'll have Father Sinella deliver the invocation.
Let us pray. Let us pray. For hundreds of years, generations have come to this blessed land, this country, this nation, For hundreds of years, generations have come to this blessed land, this country, this nation, in search of many things. in search of many things. They have included freedom of expression, freedom of religion, freedom of self-determination, and so much more. They have included freedom of expression, freedom of religion, freedom of self-determination, and so much more. Over 250 years ago, they chose a democratic form of government. Over 250 years ago, they chose a democratic form of government. Generations of Americans have continued to cast their votes Generations of Americans have continued to cast their votes and have continued to express their will concerning the governance and have continued to express their will concerning the governance of their Commonwealth, of their Commonwealth, their cities, their states, and this beloved nation. their cities, their states, and this beloved nation. This self-governance, expressed through officials elected through an elected process. This self-governance, expressed through officials elected through an elected process. Today, we pray for wisdom to guide them in their governance. Today, we pray for wisdom to guide them in their governance. We pray this direction reflect and mirror the values, the generosity, the order, the justice, We pray this direction reflect and mirror the values, the generosity, the order, the justice, the welcome, and all the values we have come to cherish. the welcome, and all the values we have come to cherish. We pray their individual commitment will be undivided for the care and concern of all. Amen. We pray their individual commitment will be undivided for the care and concern of all. Amen.
Thank you, Father. And now, if we could have the venerable Neel please join us. Thank you, Father. And now, if we could have the venerable Neel please join us. Thank you. Thank you. Please remain standing as we have the Lowell High School Color Guard in colors Please remain standing as we have the Lowell High School Color Guard in colors in the Lowell High School chorus and the singing of our national anthem. in the Lowell High School chorus and the singing of our national anthem. They're going to join us on stage here. They're going to join us on stage here.
(singing) Oh, say can you see, our love's early eye? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming! Whose bright stars and bright stars threw the perilous fire! For the red flags we watched were so gallantly streaming! Ever on his red flare the bombs were singing there, it proved through the night that our flag was still there! Oh, say those as stars may go, better yet wait! For the land of the free and the home
Thank you all. You may be seated, please. I'd just like to recognize the effort on part of the choir. Again, they did a fantastic job. It's no wonder, like I said, they're nationally recognized year in and year out. They continue to amaze. They get bigger and bigger, which says a lot about its program and what's going on over at the high school. And I'd like to also recognize the Lowell Police Department have the Color Guard there as well. I don't know if I mentioned them. Would Assistant Clerk Gitcher please call the roll?
Councillor-elect Chow. Councillor-elect Dakota. Councillor-elect Gitcher. Councillor-elect Janess. Councillor-elect Leahy. Councillor-elect Mercia. Councillor-elect Noon. Councillor-elect Robinson. Councillor-elect Rourke. Councillor-elect Scott. Councillor-elect Yen.
Thank you. Noting 11 present. Next order of business will be to read the election, official notice of the election from the Election Commissioner. Notice is dated December 21st, 2023, addressed to myself, Mike O'Garry, City of Lowell Clerk's Office, RE. Official certified results for your municipal election, November 7th, 2023. Dear Mr. Geary, please find and close the official certified results of the City of Lowell's November 17th, 2023 municipal election. These results were accepted by the Election Commission during a public meeting on December 5th, 2023. Sincerely, Greg Pappas, Director of Elections. I'd like a motion to accept the communication and place it on file by Councillor Noon, seconded by Councillor Leahy. All in favor, aye. Opposed, nay. Hearing none. The communication is accepted and adopted. I would now ask that each councillor-elect step in front of their respective desk, What's going to happen is you're going to get sworn in by Judge Geary in one minute. I would ask that it's going to be a unified oath with each of you. At the beginning of the oath, Judge Geary will go right down the line, starting with Councillor Chow, and each will individually state your name, if you could do that. Thank you. Judge Geary, if you would, please. Judge Geary, if I could, there's a sense of time. I'm going to do a unified, we had a special one for Councillor Chow, I guess, but if we could just do, my bad. Just do a unified. We'll go down the line, and you say the name. So you just say the oath one time. All right, so we'll start.
Aye.
All right. Now, please go down the line, councillor. Have them say the name, right down the line.
Do solemnly swear and affirm
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all of the duties
Discharge and perform all of the duties.
Incumbent upon me as mayor of the city of Lowell
Incumbent upon me as mayor of the city of Lowell.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
In accordance with the city of Lowell
In accordance with the city of Lowell.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution and laws
Of the Constitution and laws.
Of this Commonwealth
Of this Commonwealth.
In ordinances of the city of Lowell
In ordinances of the city of Lowell.
So help me God.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge. How do these councilors return to their desks, please? Judge Geary is always looking for extra stage time. He might have thought he was getting paid by the hour here today. Next, we're going to have a motion to proceed to select a mayor by Councillor Scott, seconded by Councillor Mercia. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Hearing no opposition. We're going to move to selection of the mayor for the city of Lowell. When each councillor is called, will they name the councillor of their choice as the next mayor of the city of Lowell. I will at this time have the assistant clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Chow.
Councillor Rourke.
Councillor Dakota.
Councillor Daniel Rourke.
Councillor Gitcher.
Councillor Mercia.
Councillor Janess.
Councillor Rourke.
Councillor Leahy.
Councillor Yen Rourke.
Councillor Mercia.
Councillor Daniel Rourke.
Councillor Noon.
Councillor Daniel Rourke.
Councillor Robinson.
Councillor Rourke.
Councillor Scott.
Councillor Yen.
Councillor Daniel Rourke.
Ladies and gentlemen, the councillor is selected. Councillor Daniel Rourke is the next mayor for the city of Lowell, 2024-2025. I would ask that his wife April, son Zach, and daughter Haley, please join us up here on the stage for a swearing in. Thank you. And if Judge Geary could come over and swear in the new mayor.
Okay, Mayor Rourke, can you raise your right hand? Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Daniel Rourke. Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm
And affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all of the duties
Discharge and perform all of the duties.
Incumbent upon me as mayor of the city of Lowell
Incumbent upon me as mayor of the city of Lowell.
According to the best of my ability and understanding
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution and laws of this Commonwealth
The Constitution and laws of this Commonwealth.
In ordinances of this city of Lowell
In ordinances of this city of Lowell.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. This is yours.
Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, friends, family, esteemed school committee members and city councillors. As a lifelong Lowellian, I stand before you today with a profound sense of gratitude as your newly-elected mayor. I am both humbled and thrilled to assume this role, a position that comes after a decade of dedicated service as a city councillor. I want to offer sincere thanks to my fellow councillors for their confidence and trust you have placed in me assuming this role. This is truly an honor of a lifetime that you not take lightly. To my friends and family, each one of you has played a crucial role in shaping my understanding of the needs and aspirations of our great city. Your unwavering support has allowed me to devote myself to public service and myself to the betterment of Lowell. To my parents, Patty and Jack, you have set values in myself and in my brothers Paul and Bobby to always put others before ourselves. And while my brothers and I don't always agree on certain issues, what we 100% agree on is how lucky we are to have parents that have supported us in everything that we want to accomplish and have accomplished already. For me, the greatest accomplishment in my life, either professionally or personally, is being a husband to my wife, April, and the father of Haley and Zach. As anyone knows, life isn't always easy. There are ups and downs, good times and bad, happy times and sad ones. I could not be any more fortunate or proud to have April, Haley, and Zach as my teammates in this journey. I love you all. I can't thank you enough for the support you have given me. To the esteemed members of the Lowell School Committee, I extend my heartfelt appreciation. Your dedication to providing our children with the tools they need to succeed is not only commendable but essential for the growth and prosperity of Lowell. I look forward to collaborating with you. Together, we will continue to ensure that every child in Lowell has access to a quality education and a pathway to a bright future, laying the foundation for a thriving community for generations to come. To my fellow councillors, both past and present, I extend my heartfelt thanks. The last 10 years have been a journey of collaboration, shared challenges, collective victories. We have listened to the concerns of our community, worked tirelessly to address them, and celebrated the triumphs that make Lowell the unique and vibrant city that it is. I carry with me the lessons learned and the bonds forged during our shared efforts. Together, we have laid the foundation for progress, and I am excited to continue this journey over the next two years alongside Kim, Paul, Vesna, Eric, Zakari, Wayne, Corey, John, and Lowell's newest city councillor, Johnny Dakota. The tenacity and passion of my colleagues have been a source of inspiration for me and is a privilege to have the opportunity to continue to work with them. And I would be remiss if not to take a moment to acknowledge today that councillor Rita Mercia will begin her 15th term as the Lowell City Councillor. Rita has been serving the city for 28 years and has been a key cog in Lowell's revival. Without her dedication and leadership, Lowell would not be the place that it is today. Please once again join me in thanking Rita for her undying dedication and service to our great city. To the dedicated employees of our city who work tirelessly to make Lowell the incredible place that it is, your commitment to public service and well-being of our residents does not go unnoticed. Whether you are maintaining our streets, teaching our students, ensuring the safety of our neighborhoods, or providing essential services, your hard work forms a backbone of our community. I am truly thankful for the professionalism and passion you bring to your roles. I look forward to working with you to continue to build a city that reflects the pride and dedication of its employee. We thank you for your service to our great city. As I reflect on the past decades as a city councillor and plan for the next two years as your mayor, I am reminded of the progress we have made and the challenges we have faced together as a community. Lowellians have always been marked by resilience, innovation, and a shared commitment to the well-being of our great city. Now, as we stand on the cusp of a new era, let us renew our dedication to the values that define Lowell: inclusivity, diversity, and relentless pursuit of progress. Together, we will build upon the foundation laid by those who came before us, ensuring that our city remains a beacon of opportunity for all. As mayor, I am committed to working with the council, school committee, and the Lowell administration to foster economic growth, educational excellence, and community engagement to enhance the quality of life for every resident, including that we are ensuring that we accountable to all residents by continuing to push their voices and to make sure that their voices are heard and acted upon, working on better shelter options for those unhoused in our community, developing a homeownership and workforce housing plan to ensure that everyone who wants to live in our great city has the resources available for them to do so. To continue the progress we have made for our neighborhood parks, and also moving forward on the College Stadium project to provide Lowell High School students and coaching staff the state of their facility that is reflective of the athletic opportunities that Lowell Public Schools strives to achieve for our students. And lastly, Lowell's five-year economic plan that should be available for review earlier this year and working to ensure that the administration has the resources needed to make this plan a reality, while also holding them accountable to provide the city's residents what they need to succeed. Alongside the council, school committee, and the Lowell administration, as my vow to work collaboratively with Lowell's abundant private, public, and nonprofit stakeholders to leverage the collective wisdom of our community, together we can overcome challenges, embrace opportunities, and work to create a Lowell that is prosperous, inclusive, and thriving. As we move forward, let us remember that the strength of Lowell lies in the spirit of its people. Together, we will build bridges, break barriers, and create a future that reflects the aspirations of every resident. Lowell with its rich history, diverse community, and promising future deserves nothing less. We will face challenges, embrace opportunities, and celebrate the achievements of our community. Most importantly, we will unite in this effort to ensure that Lowell continues to shine as a symbol of hope and opportunity for generations to come. I am profoundly grateful for the trust that you have placed in me, and I am committed to serving every one of you with integrity, dedication, and a genuine desire to make Lowell the best it could be. Let us move forward, hand in hand, united in purpose, and create a future that we can all be proud of. Thank you, Lowell, once again for this incredible opportunity. Together, let us move forward to make our city even a better place to live, work, and thrive. Thank you. Thank you. We now move forward with a motion to proceed to elect a vice chair. So moved by Councillor Gitcher, seconded by Councillor Dakota. All in favor, say aye. All those who favor, no. Would each councillor, when their name is called, designate a candidate of their choice by name. The court please call the roll.
Councillor Chow. Councillor Dakota. Councillor Gitcher. Councillor Janess. Councillor Leahy. Councillor Mercia. Councillor Noon. Councillor Robinson. Mayor Rourke.
Councillor Paul Rathayem.
Councillor Scott. The roll call indicates Councillor Yen has the next vice chair of the city of Lowell. If we could have Councillor Yen's wife, Robin, and two sons, Sebastian and Justin, join us, as along with his daughter Kimberly and granddaughter Annabelle. We got them all? All right. Judge Geary, if you would.
Vice Mayor, if you could raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Paul Rathayem.
Do solemnly swear and affirm
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially
That I faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all of the duties
Discharge and perform all of the duties.
Incumbent upon me
Incumbent upon me.
As the vice chair of the Lowell City Council
As the vice chairs of the Lowell City Council.
According to the best of my ability and understanding
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of this Commonwealth
Of the law of this Commonwealth.
In ordinances of the city of Lowell
In ordinance with the city of Lowell.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
I have 15 pages of speeches, but to spare you, I'm going to just put it down and I would just say a few things really short. That first of all, I want to thank God for keeping me alive, to be here in front of you, to serve the people of Lowell. I love my family, my wife, thank her, and my four children. And now we have a grandchild, Annabelle, who allowed me to do all of this. My wife is the one that do all the work behind the scene to allow me to be able to go to different meetings, nights and days and weekends as well. I also want to thank my colleagues. Without their support, I would not be here. And I pledge to work together with everyone, especially remember every birthday that they have. So I have to be sure that my unofficial title is the Chair of the Happy Birthday Subcommittee. So I have to uphold to that reputation. And I want to thank the City Manager, Tom Golden, and his team that put together and to support and help our city. And I also want to thank the hard-working City of Lowell from the DPW, you know, snow, rain, they out there and to perform their duty. Also, thanks to our safety officer, the police department, the fire department, and the, you know, the safety officer keep our city safe and residents as well. And I'd like to thank our resident of the City of Lowell, particularly District 7 that I represent. I want to give them the voice for those who have no voice. I want to represent those who are not speaking the same language, but I want to support them, be their voice, and help them to build a better life. Together with my colleagues behind me, we will work together to improve our city, to be the best place to live and to raise our family. May God bless all of you. Thank you very much for the honor.
Congratulations, Vice Chair Yem. Moving on, we have a motion to adopt the present rules for the City Council for 2024-2025. So moved by Counselor Janess, seconded by Counselor Scott. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. So voted. I would now like to ask Father Sennella to perform the bandiction.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of this day. We thank you for the gift of this beloved democracy. We also give thanks for all those who have gone before us and have given of themselves in the governance of our city. We ask that our city council and each and every one of us really make this always a city of warmth, of love, of welcome, that all have a place. We ask for your wisdom to guide us all, especially our elected officials, our city council. Amen.
Thank you, Father. I would like, I now ask to Lowell High School Chorus to sing "God Bless America." Thank you once again to Lowell High School Choir. And lastly, with having no further business, I have a motion to adjourn. So moved by Counselor Leahy, seconded by Counselor Yem. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good morning. Thank you much for attending this morning ceremony. It's much appreciated, and as mayor of the City of Lowell and the council, we thank you for your attendance and very grateful for all your gifts as City of Lowell. Have a great day.